Eric and Sophia, are you guys back? Perfect, okay, great. We are all back, so we will now take up item 13B, Infrastructure Operations Update Post-Tomas Fire. Mr. McIntyre, go ahead whenever you're ready.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council. As you all know, we're nearing the three-year anniversary of the Thomas Fire, which, as you also know, had a devastating impact on our community and on the region. Now, I was not here during the Thomas Fire, having been hired the following year. However, my experience with the fire is from stories told to me by fire victims, community members, neighbors, staff, and council. Since I've been City Manager, two major priorities have been the Thomas, has have been the Thomas Fire rebuilds for those who lost their homes, and focusing on strengthening our capability to respond to a future fire catastrophe. You will learn tonight what has been done as far as coordination of resources at the federal and state levels, given the firestorms that have sadly become more of our norm. You will also hear what we are doing locally to build our resiliency to future fire events. Joining me tonight in the presentation is Fire Chief David N'daya, who will be followed by Ventura Water General Manager Susan Rundgren. Chief N'daya?
Thank you, Alex. Appreciate that. Mayor, Deputy Mayor, Council Members, thank you for having us tonight to follow up on what's coming up, unbelievably to be three years since the Thomas Fire burned through the county and overran our city as it marched into Santa Barbara County in December of 2017. The night of the fire, I was, I had been the fire chief just short of four years serving in this capacity and having served the city of Ventura since 1993 as a first responder. And that night was definitely somewhat of a nightmare for everyone, but especially for the fire department, to have that marching toward our city and knowing the gravity of the situation, even before it arrived at our city limits, having burned through from Santa Paula toward our city. I'm going to go through a very brief recount of what occurred, give you some data points, and then talk mainly about citywide, regionally, and throughout the state, what our service improvements have been from a fire standpoint since the Thomas Fire, and then I'll be handing it off to the General Manager from Ventura Water, Susan Rundgren, to follow up from her angle as well. So we can go to the next slide, we'll get started. Just a quick recap, the night of the Thomas Fire, there was a six-day-long red flag warning. At the time, it was the longest sustained red flag warning in California history. Winds were expected to be 50 to 60 miles per hour with low humidity. Fuel levers were at critical dryness. There was an untouched fuel bed in a lot of the county areas surrounding the city. A rugged terrain is where our city is built. As we know, there's a called the Wildland Urban Interface, where a lot of our homes abut the actual hillsides and the foothills. The fire began around 6:30 PM on December 4th. It was a Monday night. There was a council meeting in session, and we were installing a brand-new mayor. As that was happening was our past Mayor Neil Andrews. And that process was in, was in effect when the fire started. So I contacted via text City Manager Mark Watkins to let him know that we had a very serious fire under these conditions that was burning in Santa Paula and had the potential to have a severe impact on the city of Ventura later that night. About an hour later, second start of another fire occurred in Upper Ojai, and the two fires quickly merged together and marched their way at blazing speed toward the city of Ventura. The fire traveled about 18 miles in five hours, and I think to put it in perspective for non-fire service people, the fire at its height was consuming one football field every second. So it was eating up an acre per second as it marched toward the city. And we were doing everything we could as a region to slow it down or stop it. But I'll explain a little more what that was, how it actually presented itself as a fire coming up here in a couple of slides. So if we can move to the next slide, please. So the Thomas Fire, in its totality, you see the footprint there. Burned 281,000 acres. It lasted 40 days. Structures that were threatened during the fire were 18,000. Within the city of Ventura, there were 535 buildings that were destroyed completely and 150 buildings that were damaged. I think the next bullet is one of the most important. And that's that zero lives were lost inside the city of Ventura, even though we were overrun by what became the worst wildfire in California history at the time. Zero lives were lost, and that's something that I spoke to at all of our town hall meetings and our local assistance center that we set up around the city. I spoke directly, face-to-face with homeowners who had lost everything, but told them that they could rebuild, but we weren't burying our community. And that was something that was not true for other communities that had gone through fires before and since the Thomas Fire. We had successful evacuations working as first responders and as city employees working as first responders that night of evacuating 27,000 residents from our hillsides in a matter of just a couple of hours prior to the fire arriving. That was first responders working as first responders. That was non-first responders working as first responders. And that was our community helping one another, neighbors helping neighbors, making phone calls, banging on doors, helping people load into cars, helping the elderly. That's how we got 27,000 people down from that hillside ahead of the fire. At its height, at the Thomas Fire, down at staging at the base camp at Ventura County Fairgrounds, we had over 8,000 firefighters from 702 agencies and 22 states across the United States. Given those numbers, 8,000 firefighters, I think it's important to note that the Ventura City Fire Department is a municipal fire department. We operate out of six stations. We've done so for 32 years. And we have 22, 23 now firefighters on duty every day to protect 110,000 people. So the night of the Thomas Fire, we had 23 firefighters that were the initial response from within our city limits to fight what was clearly a wildfire. We're not forest firefighters. We're not wildland firefighters. We're not staffed as wildland firefighters with hand crews. We had 23 people to protect the city of Ventura when that fire first broke out. That, I can't go through in that presentation without recognizing your firefighters. They all came back into work. We did a recall, but we didn't need to. When they heard about this happening, they all came back in. They reported for duty. They drove to their station, grabbed their gear. And even if there wasn't an engine there, they drove their personal vehicles until they found an engine. They got on that engine with their protective gear and started to fight fire, because that's what they swore to do when they put the badge on their chest to put themselves between the community in danger. And I want to, again, three years into this, extend an incredibly prideful thank you to the Ventura Fire Department for doing their due diligence and doing everything they could that night and into the next week or so to protect this community in the face of disaster that we had hoped we would never have to deal with. We can go to the next slide, please. So I want to talk a little bit about what's happened since the Thomas Fire. There's a thing called disaster readiness for safer communities. It's come to be known as de-risk throughout the fire service. It's a collaborative effort of multiple entities, including the California Fire Chiefs Association, Cal Metro Fire Chiefs Association, Fire Districts Association of California, California Professional Firefighters, California State Firefighters Association, and the League of California Cities. Those entities all came together to try and figure out what we could do to make our response better and decrease our risks in the face of wildfires and other disasters caused by weather. In 2017, prior to the Thomas Fire, there were over 36,000 requests for mutual aid. 11,000 of those requests went unfilled because resources were not available because the state was so stripped in the fire service to provide that mutual aid. So local entities had to do without 11,000 times. The purpose of de-risk is to request and deploy mutual aid before a disaster incident, utilizing National Weather Service red flag warnings and other weather advisories about rain, wind, or potential mudslides. The concept was actually used in 2017 by the Ventura County Fire Department prior to the Thomas Fire. Ahead of that red flag warning, the Ventura County Fire Department staffed and deployed 24 additional engines in the county areas ahead of the six-day red flag warning. In January of 2018, as we all know, there was a devastating mudslide in the community of Montecito. California Office of Emergency Services prepositioned a 29-member Regional Urban Search and Rescue Task Force ahead of those heavy rains prior to the mudslide to augment the emergency response as soon as it happened. In fiscal year 1819 for the state of California, those groups came together to implement what is now known as de-risk. And the state allotted $25 million to augment local governments to preposition engine strike teams before disaster strikes. Additional monies from that same $25 million were used to improve communication and technology for the Resource Deployment System. At the time, it was known as ROS. Replace, it replaced ROS, which was Resource Ordering and Status System. That system has been replaced and is more efficient and basically has a better technology to deploy those units, and it's not such a long system to get resources moving. If we can move to the next slide. Well, I'm not going to read slides to you. You're more than welcome to take a look at those. What I'm going to talk to you about is where we are today, having faced the Thomas Fire in 2017. What has the state learned and how have we prepared? I would say that it's a priority all over the state to prepare and decrease risk to the best of our ability for wildfire and other natural disasters that are weatherborne. It's interesting to note, of the top 10 fires in California, at the time of the Thomas Fire, we became unfortunately number one. We were the largest wildfire that had burned in California recorded history with the, with the 231,000 acres that had burned. We quickly became number two only seven months later in July of 2018 to the Mendocino Complex. Today, the Thomas Fire is the seventh-largest wildfire in California history. The other five wildfires that put it, that put themselves between second place and where we are today in seventh place occurred this August and this September. Three years after the Thomas Fire, we had five fires in two months that eclipsed the Thomas Fire. The number-one fire, the August Complex, burned over 1 million acres and went through five counties while it did so. The number-five and number-six fires burned between 320 and 364,000 acres and destroyed between 1,500 and 24 structures each. And unfortunately, these same two fires claimed 21 human lives. Best put, wildfires are a reality in California. There is no way to describe them other than a tidal wave of flames. It is as difficult to protect our Wildland Urban Interface communities from wildfire as it is to protect our beach communities from a tidal wave. Next slide, please. In the city, our Ventura Fire Prevention Division worked to increase their fire hazard reduction program known as the Brush Clearance Program. They increased their inspections by 900% with your support and the support of the City Manager's Office. We went from inspecting throughout my career, since I've been on this department, we inspected around 600 parcels that were on the perimeter of the high and very high fire hazard areas as designated, actually previously spoken about. We've moved that to 6,000 parcels, which is every parcel that is included in the high fire hazard areas and very high fire hazard areas. That puts us in line with the other fire agencies in the county, such as Ventura County Fire Department, who inspects every parcel that falls within those, those regions, not just on the perimeter. The standard is a 100-foot clearance from those structures. And again, with the support of the City Manager's Office and City Council, we've worked to provide the temporary and part-time staffing that we train and work to get those done, because that is obviously a tremendous increase in workload. And so we've worked to make that happen and become a reality, and it's, we're, we're still working on it right now. But that is where we've headed, and that's where, what we've achieved. Next slide, please. Ventura City Fire Equipment, we received some upgrades with scheduled replacements. There were no unscheduled replacements that occurred within our fleet. However, we do have a 25-year apparatus replacement plan for our fire engines. When we do get them, there's a 25-year replacement plan. Part of that replace, part of those replacements occurred just days ago. Two new engines arrived. We thank you for that very much. Council supported that. We've saved our money to buy those. We know when we need them, about every 20 to 25 years. And two of them arrived about a month ago. They had to be outfitted by our amazing fleet staff in Public Works. They got them street-ready once they were delivered from Wisconsin. And they are now on the street. They, they literally hit the street at the stations less than 48 hours ago. So I will be reporting to you shortly in your council connection with some photos and some statistics on what those engines will do and how they're going to help this community stay safe and replace older 20-plus-year older engines that were due for replacement. Additionally, we had a pickup truck that was due for replacement, again, scheduled. But we worked again with the City Manager's Office with the need for what was happening in the community. You get the alerts from me all the time when we have our vegetation and river bottom fires happening more and more these days. And trying to put an engine in there is basically impossible. And it takes a long time and a lot of personnel to extend thousands of feet of hose into a river bottom from a paved road or a levee. What we did was we replaced a scheduled pickup truck with what you see here, which is an F-550 truck with an exchangeable bed. So we, we have multiple uses for this vehicle, not just brush firefighting. But what it does, it's, it's a fast-response vehicle. It allows us to do something called pump and roll, because the pump is independent of the engine, and they can roll with that. It can get into places that an engine cannot, and it can insert people into the river bottoms far more quickly, and we can get water on the fire far more quickly. We only have one of those right now, and it was kind of a, a test. And the crews in the field, as well as the management of the fire department, have been very happy with its performance. So we will be looking at those again when there's a replacement coming up. That is a huge help to the, to the fire department for the river bottom, for vegetation, and it obviously could access the hillsides when needed through smaller roads and through fire roads. But mostly at this point, thank goodness, the, the fires have been in the river bottoms, and that's where this vehicle has seen most of its use. Next slide, please. So looking into the future, these are all important aspects to how we're going to be moving forward. There's a multi-tiered rehearsed emergency response system. What does that mean in simple terms? It's basically de-risk. It's what I talked about. It's the ability to utilize the region to make requests through the Office of Emergency Services in Cal Fire and to have strike teams pre-deployed together, ready to respond with a leader. A strike team, I'm sorry, is five engines. A strike team is five fire engines and a leader that is usually in some type of a utility vehicle, a pickup truck or a command suburban. So you have at least 15 firefighters and a leader as an organized unit to deploy. And what you have is multiple strike teams deployed throughout the community ahead of a red flag warning, a wind event, a heat wave, or heavy rains, so that they can deploy quickly and in force way more rapidly than we could before. And like I said, the, the dispatch system from the state level, the ordering system is a lot more refined and has us responding much more quickly. It used to be 12 or 24 hours, and the way fires work today, we need help immediately within the first few hours of a fire. Susan will be talking about this coming up, but as we've all known as well, through the utilities, we have the Public Safety Power Shutoffs or the PSPS that impacts not just the fire department, but the entire community. We've worked with the utilities to refine the notifications for those and also how we would respond and what we need to do to adjust if those occur because of the fact that utilities can be the cause of fires at times throughout the state. We've broadened our agency collaboration and preseason coordination. Fire Department is fraught with phone calls and conference calls with the National Weather Service and our, our inter-agencies between the fires. But what we didn't do and what we're doing more now is we're including more collaborators on more meetings. They were included, but on a very general level, in almost one preseason meeting per year. And now what we're doing is our meetings are including more and more cooperating agencies so that everyone is on the same page. We're aware of our capacities, our shortfalls, our operational plans, and also what's expected for what the, whatever the emergency may be, whether it's wind, rain, a red flag warning with a combination of low humidity, heat, and wind. So we make sure that everyone is aware, not just the first responders, not just law enforcement for evacuation, not just the fire service for an operational response. The Ventura City Fire Department has increased staffing ahead of events more often than we used to with the support of City Manager McIntyre. Upon his arrival, he has said, "You will do whatever you need to do to make sure we are as prepared as possible to respond." So we do, we do backstaff what engines we have. We only have so many. So we do backstaff the reserve engines when we do have red flag warnings, and we also put an additional battalion chief available to respond either with a strike team or as a command officer more quickly to take command of an incident and attack it with the resources on scene. And we do that throughout a red flag warning or throughout a wind event. And then one of the most important things that I feel we've done, I was a huge advocate for this, a huge proponent for many, many years. Again, City Manager McIntyre came in, talked with me a lot about the Thomas Fire and what we learned. Talked with the executive team, was very surprised to hear that we hadn't hired any emergency services manager for the city. He, he supported that immediately, made it a priority, brought it to council. And again, thank you to council and to City Manager McIntyre and his team that we hired Daniel Wall, an emergency services manager for the city, who acts as a hub. He acts as the collector of subject matter experts. And he's responsible for community education, staff education within the city, emergency plans, the EOC, making sure we're trained in ICS and that we have drills. Clearly, COVID-19 threw a curveball into Dan's plan. But his being here, I supported 100%, and I think honestly, I feel like he's a bull behind a gate just waiting to be let out, because there's a lot he would like to achieve, and there's a lot of things that are holding him back from doing so. But we're also going to follow the rules of COVID-19 and make sure we find a way to do it either virtually or find a way to work it into being able to train the community and city staff. And that's something that's, that's a problem for all emergency preparedness throughout the state, is also having to deal with COVID-19 as a reality. Next slide, please. So with Thomas Fire Recovery, this is more statistics for me to share from community development. From the, for the recovery, some of the data points, there are 440 repair permits that were submitted. 342 homes have been approved for rebuild. 187 homes have been approved for actual occupancy. 35 rebuild projects are currently in plan check, and there are 155 rebuild projects under construction. And before I hand it over to, to Susan, I would just like to, when we do talk about the Thomas Fire, and this may be my only opportunity to talk publicly to both the council and the community, as I close out my portion this evening, I would like to remember Corey Iverson, who is a Cal Fire San Diego firefighter who was killed during the Thomas Fire in the community of Fillmore on December 14th. And also a community member, Virginia Pasola, who was killed evacuating Wheeler Canyon the night of the fire in a vehicle crash. And while we didn't lose any lives within the city, the fire did claim two very important lives. And Corey, Corey's wife was pregnant at the time. He had a two-year-old daughter. And they're now living without dad and without husband. So I'll hand this off in memory of Corey Iverson and Virginia Pasola and hope that you are a little more informed now of what we've done, what the state has done, and what legislation has been passed to help Ventura be a little more resilient and to prepare as much as possible for the risk of wildfire in the future. And with that, I will hand off to Ventura Water General Manager Susan Rundgren.
Thank you, Chief N'daya. Good evening, Honorable Mayor, Deputy Mayor, Council Members, staff, and those of you watching at home. I'm Susan Rundgren, the General Manager of Ventura Water, the city's Water and Wastewater Department. My portion of the presentation will go over what Ventura Water has implemented since the Thomas Fire to better prepare for the next wildfire and the citywide power shutoffs that Chief mentioned. Before I discuss improvements we have implemented, I wanted to give you a brief overview of the city's water system to provide some context. The city has three water treatment plants. One treats water from the Ventura River. The other two treat water pumped from our groundwater wells. We also receive treated water, we receive your treated water from Lake Casitas. Our system consists of approximately 385 miles of pipelines, 19 pump stations, 27 tanks and reservoirs, and 10 wells. Next slide. The city's water system is divided into 14 pressure zones. Each pressure zone is served by at least one tanker reservoir. The zone number corresponds to the high water elevation of the tank that serves the zone. As you can see on the map here, the city has three main pressure zones, the 210, the 330, and the 430 zones. Water from Lake Casitas and Ventura River flow to reservoirs located in the 210 zone. Water from the city's groundwater sources are pumped to reservoirs and tanks located in the 330 and 430 zones. From these zones, pump stations are used to pump water to tanks at higher elevations. A little bit about sizing for pump stations and tanks. Pump stations and tanks are sized to meet the American Waterworks Association design guidelines. And the city's water system complies with those industry standards, and they met them during the Thomas Fire. Pump stations are sized to meet domestic demands during really what is called, what is the maximum day, typically in the summer months when, when customers are irrigating and using more water in general. Tanks are sized to include three different components. Domestic storage to accommodate for fluctuations during the day due to different demand. Fire storage and also emergency storage. Emergency storage is calculated based on the maximum day demands. And fire storage is based on providing fire protection to the building and a pressure zone with the highest flow, fire flow requirement. For single-family residential neighborhoods, fire storage is calculated as the volume of water needed to fight a residential fire for a two-hour duration. Next, I'm going to briefly discuss what took place during, with the water system during the Thomas Fire. As we all know, on December 4th, the fire raced through the hillsides toward the northeast border of the city, breached the city limits at about 9:30 PM, and continued to move swiftly to the north and west. At that time, the water system was in normal operations. In the early morning on December 5th, low water pressures were reported at several fire hydrants locations in the upper easterly pressure zones in the hillsides. The system lost pressure because water was being drained at a tremendous rate due to the extent of the firefighting response and leaks at residential properties damaged by the fire. Fire damage that occurred to residential properties included melted irrigation plumbing and caused uncontrolled water releases and significant water loss. In addition, some residents use their private onsite sprinkler system and hoses to protect their properties. Upon post-fire inspections, some of these systems remained on when the residents were evacuated. These uncontrolled water losses occurred in the active fire areas and reduced the available water supplies used to fight the fire. Power outages and damage to some of our communication equipment further complicated the operation of the water system. Ventura crews immediately set to address all these pressure losses. Backup generators were utilized on water facilities impacted by the regional-wide power outages. Leaks were addressed by emergency responders and city staff, and the system was fully repressurized thereafter. You may recall also that the city issued a boil order, a water advisory, for a brief period at the beginning of the Thomas Fire. This advisory was under the direction of the Division of Drinking Water and was precautionary only since staff working at both the city's Avenue Treatment Plant and Casitas' Treatment Plant had to evacuate due to safety concerns. The Division of Drinking Water requires notification to the public and testing to ensure water quality safety. We did not experience any water quality issues during or following the Thomas Fire. Water quality has been a problem in other cities or water districts following some of the wildfires. While the elevated zones in the fire did experience pressure loss, the rest of our water system performed well and remained pressurized during the Thomas Fire. Before I go on to discuss and discuss the improvements that we have made since the Thomas Fire, I do want to take this moment to thank city staff and especially Ventura Water and Public Works crews for working as hard and as quickly as they did to restore water pressure to the elevated zones during the fire. While I was not General Manager at the time, I know what they did, and I want to say that I'm very proud of them for the work they did that week and the work they do every day. Next slide. Now, I want to discuss the improvements that Ventura Water has implemented to be better prepared for a wildfire and during these power outages, such as during this Southern California Edison's new Public Safety Power Shutoff Policy. These are improvements that will benefit the entire system and all water customers. We have categorized these into, as noted on the slide, we've updated procedures for red flag warning and public safety power shutoff conditions. We've improved communications with Southern California Edison. We have a capital improvement program project for generator improvements. We have a supervisor control and data acquisition system improvements known as SCADA. We've done site maintenance and hardened facilities. The next slides will further discuss how these improvements will help during a wildfire or during a public safety power shutoff event. Next slide, please. First, we have updated our emergency procedures for red flag warning conditions and to address Southern California Edison's new public safety First, we have updated our emergency procedures for red flag warning conditions and to address Southern California Edison's new public safety power shut off policy. Two important aspects of the policy include the following. When a red flag warning is issued, we fill our storage tanks and keep them operating at a high level. There are two main reasons they are not kept completely filled during normal operating conditions. One is power costs and the other is water quality. Typically, the city will try to maximize the use of pump stations when the power costs are low. Regarding water quality, water must circulate through the water system prevent what is called nitrification or loss of chlorine residual. Without the demand for the water supply, nitrification can occur in a water system. If this occurs, then a boil order is required to be issued, as I mentioned before, to all affected customers until the system can be restored back to safe water drinking conditions. Ventura Water Operations Staff works hard on a daily basis to make sure that the water customers receive is safe to drink and water must be circulated in tanks for that to occur. Under the updated procedures, water tanks are filled when a red flag warning or a public safety power shut off warning is issued to maximize storage during the event. And then return to normal operating levels following the event to maintain system water quality. Also, when red flag warning and public safety power shut off warnings are issued. Our operations staff tests and inspects all generators, fuel levels, pumps and wells and deploys portable generators. This is in addition to our normal maintenance of our facilities. A common problem during wildfires is the inability of staff to safely enter burn areas to maintain and inspect facilities. Some other items in the procedures include some of the following, deploying small generators to tank sites for communication needs. Coordinating with the city fleet division to implement refilling operations of generators. Coordination with Casitas Municipal Water District Staff. And implementing twelve-hour operator shifts if needed. Ventura Water Staff has experienced two full seasons of Edison's Public Safety Power Shut Off Events and has responded quickly and without incident. We have tested the lines of communication response with outside agencies as well as city departments. Each time we continue to review and refine our procedures. Next slide. The next area I want to discuss was is generator improvements. I did want to make a note. The on the there should, there's a correction to the slide, so the pre-Thomas Fire. They were not nine, they were not fifteen, but there were nine stationary generators that supplied backup power to ten, not nine booster pump stations. So I just wanted to make that note. As far as the generators, we have made improvements so that all pump stations currently have generators for backup power. Previously, the city had some pump station locations where generators could be deployed in the case of a power failure. Once Southern California Edison announced their public safety power shut off policy. The city made the determination that every water facility should have assigned backup power. And initiated a capital improvement project that was approved by council. The capital improvement project includes rental generators at all the locations that are currently under design for stationary generators. For the few sites that do not have the space for a stationary generator. A portable generator is stored and maintained at a nearby city facility, ready for deployment in case of a power shut off. Next slide. We also are doing SCADA improvements. During the power outage, we lost real-time information that is provided by the Supervisory Control and Data Acquisition System, known as the SCADA system. The SCADA system provides operators the ability to remotely monitor the system and to understand the water levels within tanks, system pressures. Flow rates of pump stations and to be alerted at to where any of the operational issues are occurring. Since the Thomas Fire, we have purchased small generators to power control equipment at tank sites, they are shown on this slide. There have also been modifications made to the communication signals so that all wells have direct communication to the treatment plants they supply water to. And there is a capital improvement project to make further improvements to the SCADA system. Next slide. We've also done site maintenance and hardening of facilities. A potential problem during wildfires is damage to facilities. Although we sustain just minor damage to to some of our water facilities. The city has increased fire hazard reduction efforts through the removal of brush debris and tree foliage around these facilities. In addition, we have looked closer at ways to better protect our facilities. One example is shown on this slide. Fire damage did occur to a communications unit at a tank site. That unit was moved closer to the tank to be better protected. Next slide. This slide shows are some of our capital improvement projects. The city has identified several that will increase water system resiliency. Our east-to-west pipelines and generators. Our Supervisory Control and Data Acquisition System upgrades. Our state water interconnect, Ventura Water Pier and Satacway Well will provide water supply redundancy and provide an emergency connection to Kiagus Municipal Water District. Our advanced meter infrastructure, which is about eighty percent complete, will help to us to improve our leak detection information. Next slide. As we look to the future, we continue to improve by evaluating our procedures and by considering experiences from other agencies. Our best practices, outside and city agency coordination. We are currently updating our water system master plan. This will include such items as condition and risk assessment of facilities. Water age analysis, storage evaluation. Updating our hydraulic model and an operational analysis. As a city, we are increasing emergency training and interdepartment coordination. This concludes my portion of the presentation. I will now turn it back to Alex for any further remarks and to address any questions.
Thank you, Susan. Thank you, Chief Endia. A council that does complete our presentation, we are happy to take questions.
Madam Clerk, are there any public comments on this item?
We have no public speakers on this agenda item.
Great, thank you. Councilmember Nazarenko.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Mr. McIntyre, as well as Ms. Rungrin for the presentation. I want to follow up if I can, just on a few areas. When you look back at December the fourth, twenty seventeen, and the loss of water pressure. Was it owing more to a loss of power or a loss of water supply?
Water supply. There was not enough water supply to meet the demands of the wildfire.
And can you just explain that a little bit more, Ms. Rungrin? We basically, it sounds like ran out of water. I understand that everyone's got their sprinkler system on at the same time, so there's this extraordinary drain of the water supply, but doesn't the water replenish itself? Thus, it would continue to come in even though people would be draining it?
So one of the things is the, as I mentioned, for tank storage. We have a two-hour supply for firefighting suppression. And so that volume is not enough to sustain a wildfire.
No, I get that. I guess what I'm asking is. Would we then have the capability to refill the tanks by getting our pump stations to operate? And refill them at the higher elevations?
Yes, we would have to make sure that there were no main breaks, no leaks in the pipe, et cetera, to keep it moving.
So I'm sorry, I'm missing something. Why didn't that happen then on December the fourth? I guess. If it's a water supply issue that the tanks were at certain levels. And not a power issue. Why couldn't we continue to refill those tanks when they were depleted? I guess that's my question.
So as I mentioned, we did refill them. So one of the things we I mentioned is we went up and we had to shut water services off. There were basically pipes that were burst. There were no homes at those locations and so water is basically going out. It's you have a straw with a bunch of holes in it. And so in order to repressurize and refill, we had to shut all the services off and to main get the pressure back up. So we did bring that back up.
It took about three, four days to do so, as I recall.
I don't know the exact timing. I think it was a day or two at the most.
Not where I was, but nevertheless. Help me understand sort of prospectively, are the tanks now at different levels because of the red flag nature of the event and what we've learned from December fourth, twenty seventeen?
Yes, as I mentioned, for red flag warnings and power shut offs, we we put the tanks to the highest level.
Okay. And then if I understand correctly from your presentation, there was also physical infrastructure damage stemming from the fire. You meant it, you mentioned pipes that had melted, lines that had broken. Can you explain that a little bit more?
So those were mainly at at homes where the home was gone. And basically the there was no pipe left on the property and it was just basically, you know, water was coming out of the of the pipes.
Okay, so I'm sorry, that that's individual homeowners pipes were melting, not not the cities themselves.
Correct.
But you did mention there was damage to these communication devices and you've repositioned them to make them more secure from fire. Is that right?
Correct.
Okay, and then help me understand a little bit about SCADA. You know, I just break it down for me one more time in terms of, I understand generally that this is going to help us communicate better with our water supply so we can bring it more readily and it sounds like expeditiously to the sites where it's needed. Can you talk about that?
Sure, so it's kind of like you have a computer game on your you're watching and you're watching the tank levels go up and down, you're watching pumps go on and off, you're watching wells go on and off. You can kind of look at the whole system and so that's something we're making improvements to. To to better to update our SCADA system.
And on to a long and clear point, for example. The water was drained from those high elevation tanks. Where does the water then come from to refill them?
It comes from the the lower levels I talked about, the two-ten, the three-thirty and the four-thirty zones.
Okay, and do you feel confident that if there were to be another wildfire, that we would be able to more readily get the water into those tanks?
With the generators at all stations now and the high water levels that we do, we will do the best that we can.
Okay, you said, well, we will do the best that we can. That made me a little bit uneasy. What do you mean by that, Ms. Rungrin?
I mean that our system meets. You know, the standards for residential water system, not for a wildfire system. And again, you know, we we do everything we can.
You do everything you can, meaning you you can't eliminate all risk, but you can do the best to eliminate as much of the risk that you know of and that you have the technology, the infrastructure and the staff to address. Is that what you mean?
Correct.
Okay.
And really with working with the community too, they they do a great job.
Sure, sure. And and our firefighters as well, and I agree with you, the the water staff. You know. This is sort of something that you may know. When I got the message from the City Manager then to go home right away. I it may have been nine, nine-thirty and then I remember doing what probably everyone did in the hillside, which is turn their sprinkler system on. And then the the pardon me, the power went out. And you know, all you could see was this orange glow coming towards your home. And you're trying to find your flashlights to kind of maneuver through the house to evacuate. I'm just wondering if that were to happen again. If the power were to go out like it did that night in the hillside community. Are you confident to to the extent you can be? I realize that not all risks can be eliminated. But are you fairly confident, Ms. Rungrin, that the water would continue to be pressurized in light of the fact that we have generator capacity at locations that we didn't three years ago?
Correct. Yes.
Okay. Mayor, let me, I'm sorry, Matt, can I just have one more second?
Of course.
And then in terms of the deployment of of staff, can you just explain how they will be deployed in the event of a wildfire emergency? I mean, have you learned lessons in terms of where they need to be on specific red flag days that maybe we didn't know about three years ago?
So we do have whole operation procedures. And we have been going through training, so yes, we've improved our our safety and our training.
I guess what I'm getting at is just actual, you know, you want the right people in the right places at the right time. And do you feel knowing what you know now that in terms of water staff being able to get to these areas that they would be available to do it faster and more effectively than they did three years ago?
Yes, but I would say that three years ago, they did as fast and as effective as they could.
Yeah, I I'm not in any way implying that they were less effective. I'm just, I guess what I'm asking is, is our knowledge of such a nature that perhaps we've learned things that we didn't know three years ago?
Sure, we're always improving procedures, yes.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor Laverne, if I could, just for a quick moment, if I can address Councilman Nazarenko as well, just just for information's sake and for understanding, because we've obviously, we've talked about this over the last three years together. And that is a couple of things to think about are from an analogy standpoint, and I've used this and I've been told it works well to understand it is if you have a milk carton and you poke a hole in the bottom of the milk carton and you have a jug and you're refilling that milk carton from the top, you're doing okay. And you can fill that milk carton back up. But if you blow a hole in the bottom of that milk carton with a shotgun. And you have that same container up here and you're filling that milk carton. That milk carton is never going to fill back up and it's never going to be enough water from the top because of the size of the hole in that milk carton. And that's what a wildfire does to municipal fires and all those fires I talked about earlier in the evening. They experienced the same thing in August and September of twenty twenty. And these are municipal water systems that when they get blasted by that tidal wave of fire. And all those homes and all those structures burn up and there's an open pipe times hundreds of open pipes when when Susan refers to fire support for two hours, I want to make one thing clear, that's two hours on a single structure fire. So a municipal water system is designed to give us water to fight one structure fire for two hours. So when you think about the capacity of how a system is designed. This is a, this is an unfortunate, very difficult topic to broach, but it is not uncommon, and I think it's a battle that we're fighting all over the state of California. And it's literally kind of why I described what I described earlier was I would venture to say as your fire chief, had we had twice as much water, the amount of fire that blew through the city. It may have made a small difference, but when it blew through, it was us picking up the pieces after it blew through. There wasn't going to be any stopping that fire coming through our city. And that's a a difficult reality for us to face, but that's what it is. And that's why I described it as a tidal wave. So I hope that makes sense that it it's, I get it from an engineering standpoint that you want to refill it and it totally makes sense, but when you have that amount of loss coming out of what's normally a closed system, there's only so much you can do. And that happened in the Woolsey Fire, it happened in the Camp Fire, it happened this year. It happened and and it's something that obviously all the cities are working feverishly to fix. But I know just as your chief, it's one of those things that even with the best of effort, you know. It's like handing out sponges if a tidal wave is coming. We could hand out twice as many sponges and it may make a difference, but it's not going to stop the tidal wave from pushing up the coast. So it's a reality. It's no different than trying to prepare for a hurricane, a storm surge, a tornado. There's only so much you can do and then the rest of it is recovery, which is I know what we're focusing on tonight. So I hope that gives a little perspective from the fire side of of supply and how these things are happening all over the state.
Chief, I thank you and I just want you to know, I'm never going to look at a carton of milk the same way again.
Mr. Mayor, if I if I can just jump in and intervene, I mean, I appreciate what 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 Chief Endia is saying and what what Susan Rungrin is saying. I think I think Councilmember Nazarenko was asking the question, are we better prepared today than we were three years ago? And the answer is the answer is one hundred percent yes. I think what you're hearing some I think what you're hearing some, some reticence perhaps in Susan and David's voices is this notion of it's a wildfire though. I mean, that's the thing that, that you're battling just this monster and we'll probably never be fully prepared for that battle. But by golly, we're better off today, we are better off today than we were three years ago. And I think that's positive and we'll probably continue to improve. And I will say sadly, as we learn from other regions fires that they experience and we will get better based upon those experiences. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
I appreciate that, Mr. McIntyre. And then last suggestion, I had mentioned this before, but uh, this is a valuable presentation and Chief Endia and Ms. Rungren, if you can, go to the Clearpoint Homelands Association and present it to them. Uh, I know that we have a big water lift coming up and they'd certainly like to hear what you've just presented if they haven't seen it tonight. So I just want to make that suggestion available. And again, thank you all.
Thank you. A Councilmember Weir, then Councilmember Brown.
Thanks, um, I, the topic of emergency evacuation isn't on the agenda necessarily, um, but I think it's uh, important to discuss it as we move forward and as, as, e- especially since we've talked about the general plan. We have a situation in Ventura where we have a couple bottlenecks. And I lived through one of them. Um, my house is in the hills in midtown and we were evacuated about ten, ten thirty and um, tried to head to the fairgrounds. We never made it to the fairgrounds and that is because there's so much of a bottleneck and so many people moving at the same time that uh, you just stop and can't go anywhere. And that, it's pretty frightening when you have a city with a zero electricity. So it's dark, completely dark. Um, and every street is filled with cars to the point of stopping. And you have a fire coming over the hill. Um, we, we ended up stopping right at the corner of Figueroa and um, Santa Clara. So seeing the fire come over Grant Park and looking like it's coming into City Hall um, is what we were watching, but we couldn't move and we couldn't get to the fairgrounds. Um, eventually we were able to turn the car around and head east and ended up spending the rest of the night in the parking lot of Trader Joe's. So my concern is when we're looking at several things that have to do with traffic and housing that we consider people being able to get out fast and get somewhere safe. And that we look at the fairgrounds is where we always use for evacuation center. And it's big, but there's a huge bottleneck to get there. And coming down from the avenue and then coming from East Ventura, it all narrows down there to get to that one spot. Um, and we have recently had a couple of proposals for housing developments that were looking at car lifts. And the fact, first of all, that you have high density projects in, in the vicinity of that bottleneck where a bunch of cars are gonna be trying to get out at the same time and go somewhere safe. And that you have no electricity and that you have cars that are stacked up and you're sitting there waiting. You know, I know a lot of people that couldn't get in their garages to get their car because they had no electricity. And multiply that times a hundred where you're waiting for your car to come down to get it to leave and it, it's, you're, you're not getting your car. So I, I would encourage the council as we move forward um, to make sure every single housing development is evaluated in terms of emergency evacuation. How safe it's going to be, how quick it's gonna be and what the impact is gonna be on traffic and getting somewhere um, out of the path of the fire. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Brown.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, I just wanted to tell Chief Endia that I believe that this report was, is the most fantastic report that we've received yet regarding the Thomas Fire. Um, I wanted to thank you for such a thorough review and the statistics, the comparisons and layman terms, the facts that you use, infographics. Um, it was presented in a way that was clear and I meant no words when I speak of my support for the fire department uh, and the firefighters that work here in the city of Ventura. And how as first responders, you all put your lives on the line every day, especially when we have those fires and we have them quite frequently on the river bottom. Uh, I appreciate the distinctions outlined and clarified regarding how the wildfire fires are uh, much like any natural disaster uh, of which California must utilize unified command in order to be effective uh, while using red flag warnings during high winds uh, season and, and the, and how you increase staffing and that, and that sort of thing. And on slide number three, when you were presenting in the beginning and you gave those visual analogies, for example, the fire was consuming football fields in seconds and the Thomas Fire was categorized as one of the worst fires in California history, which is only surpassed by consecutive fires after it. And the fact that uh, you described the wildfire as a tidal wave of fire uh, putting in, giving, putting us in mind of natural disasters, although this disaster wasn't totally natural, it was caused as we know by Southern California Edison, but um, but the idea that it was, it overtook us in a way that if we had a tidal wave that washed over Ventura, there would have been nothing uh, or very little that we could have done. Um, and of course, the milk carton and the gunshot. I think that's gonna wa, uh, be carried with you for a while, but um, I just wanted to say thank you for the report and painting such a clear picture for us exactly what occurred because I think you know, uh, it was a tragedy, how many homes were lost. It, we were grateful that there were no lives lost in the city of Ventura. Um, but you know, there were a lot of questions and a lot of misunderstandings. And today I think all of those things were clarified. So thank you again.
Thank you, Councilmember Brown. And I just want to say, um, I, I provided the information, but the D-Risk Collaborative and Heather Sue McGyessai and her team were largely responsible for the infographics that you saw. That was definitely not my doing. Uh, but yes, it was a team effort tonight and I'm, I'm thankful that it was informative for you and the rest of council.
Oh, thanks to all.
Thank you. Uh, Councilmember Heitman.
Um, uh, thank you for the report, uh, both Susan and, and Chief Endia. I, I, I think it is a very clear report, as has been stated before, and I hope other people will be able to see it. Um, obviously this was an unprecedented event in the city and everyone stepped up. Uh, you know, there were people out there from the Parks Department, I think also going door to door as well as water and um, Public Works. I mean, beyond just our first responders, everybody became a first responder uh, in the city and that's remarkable and it's, you know, every time I hear you say, well, we lost no one, we evacuated twenty seven thousand people and I've heard you say ninety minutes, two hours. That's really amazing and it speaks so much for our staff, but it also speaks so much for the community because it was people like you also mentioned, helping each other uh, get out and evacuate. And we've learned so much from it and you've given a report on what we've learned. I think um, the evacuation routes, which I'm sure are being worked on, I, I would assume by our emergency services person in conjunction probably with the fire police. Um, that's that, that's gonna be really important in the future because as we know, there were bottlenecks. It was very difficult. People spent two hours trying to get down the avenue. Uh, Councilmember Weir has talked about her experience, so um, no question that there is much to learn and um, it wasn't, nothing's ever perfect, but I think what you're, what we're, what we can't forget is this was unprecedented as a wildfire. It wasn't a normal house, I don't want to say it's normal, but a normal house fire. It was something that it's impossible to completely prepare for. And even though I appreciate what you're doing now, and I think we're gonna be much better prepared for anything in the future, but these things are catastrophic and there's no way to ever be completely prepared for them. And it's, it's tragic for all of us and it's hard to swallow, but it's the truth. So uh, thank you for, for your leadership, both of you in this and uh, to all your employees and, and the city employees who stepped up and, and did what uh, was beyond their call of duty and the citizens of Ventura. And the rebuilding process, I think um, we, we have to credit also people who have really been helpful in getting people back into their homes and helping them to, to relocate if they needed to, but just all that, the city, community coming together has been amazing and um, thank you for the report.
Thank you, Councilmember Heitman. Um, I'll take one second to mention, it's been mentioned a couple of times, the evacuations and the routes. Um, I would like to ask council as they move forward, whether it's with the general plan, with city staff um, or regionally as we approach this, again, this discussion. We need to think about the reality of evacuations and what they mean. And I just ask that you keep in mind, um, if any of us had ever been to a professional sporting event, if you've been to Dodger Stadium, if you've been to a football game, I mean, there's fifty five thousand people, that place is designed to have fifty five thousand people come to a game and park and enjoy the game. And what happens when the game's over? You sit in traffic. So the thing to think about is eve, we, we can't, I, I think that we can't possibly build a city that would accommodate catastrophic traffic flow. I hope it never happens again. I hope we never have to have that type of an evacuation. So I think a huge piece of that is involving again, the community and education and working with a realistic type of evacuation plan that involves a lot of education through our emergency services manager of what to do in an emergency because it will, there will be a traffic jam. I mean, when there's an accident on the freeway, we've all been caught in the city in complete gridlock. Like Councilmember Weir was talking about, there's an accident on the freeway and we're locked up. Main Street, telephone, every, all downtown because everyone gets off the freeway and we're gridlocked. So I think a lot, a large piece of our solution is not just how we build roads. Um, it, it's also educating our community to understand what an evacuation looks like and what to do when those evacuation routes are cut off by something like an earthquake with damage to a road and things like that. It's almost impossible to predict. So um, I would just ask that, uh, as we move forward, education for the community be a huge consideration because traffic will be a reality once again, uh, regardless, because it'll be under catastrophic situations. So, if that helps.
Thank you, Chief. Uh, I have uh, two questions and then a couple, a few comments. The first is, Susan, you mentioned SCADA and uh, the new system we have in place. And it's my understanding that with this new system, we have uh, improved access to real time data. Uh, can you talk a little more about what, what this system provides in terms of this new access to real time infor- information we get now?
So we're actually, we have a capital improvement project that we're gonna be working on, but we've made some minor, minor improvements to our SCADA system. And this is just, like I said, it's, it's really just looking where you have, it's almost like a computer game almost where you can look and you can see real time where tanks are filling, wells are uh, pumping and you can see the data. So you can look at our production records, et cetera. So that's what, really what it is, but we're improving so we have better communication between our wells um, and you know, our, our, just different systems with chemicals and everything. There's always improvements to be made.
Thank you. And then, I don't know if this is for, for Mr., Mr. Wall or not, but it's been mentioned by several of my colleagues about evacuation uh, routes and, and obviously we learned a lot from, from that evening uh, and the hours that followed. Uh, have we made any changes to evacuation routes and, and what if any um, outreach are we doing to educate the public about, even if it's just uh, uh, an evacuation route that's already in place, but maybe people just didn't, weren't aware of where they're supposed to go? What are we doing to kind of bring the, the public up to speed uh, with this moving forward?
Actually, Mr. Mayor, I, I think Chief Schindler might be better positioned to answer this question. Uh, Chief, are you on the, are you on the call?
I'm here. Good evening. Uh, Mayor, after the uh, Thomas Fire, we learned real quickly that uh, just what Chief Endia said, evacuating twenty seven thousand residents, we're not gonna have a smooth traffic flow. Quite honestly, the night of the fire, it moved so fast that we had a choice to make and and the choice, choice was easy. It was life safety. It was getting people, um, number one, out of their homes. Um, we did that successfully. The consequence of that was we had uh, thousands of people in their cars on the streets of Ventura in gridlock. So after the fire, um, we, we thought about what would be the next incident that could possibly affect these burn areas and that was um, rain and flooding. So at that time, the police department, the fire department and Public Works actually uh, worked together to develop some evacuation maps for the burned areas. Uh, mostly those were the west side of town and the hillside areas above Foothill and Poli. Um, so working together, we came up with some evacuation routes. Um, we went to the community council meetings at the time. We distributed the, the routes. We also published them on our website. I believe they're still there today. And then every year, um, we go back out to those, those council meetings and just talk about them again, redistribute the maps, remind people where they are. Um, the idea behind it was you're gonna have gridlock. We want to get you out of your house um, to a place of, of safety, uh, assuming that it's a massive fire or a flood. And to almost self, um, to be able to self-help, meaning if you're, if you live in a certain area, we were directing people, if you live on this street and you come out to this major thoroughfare, here's the way we want you to go. If you come on this, you live on this street and you come out to a major thoroughfare, we want you to go the other way so that traffic is dispersed in separate directions, hopefully not to impact one um, travel, traveled road in any disparate um, manner. That's something that I think as we continue, now that we have the um, emergency services manager, I think we can actually improve those and expand them more to, to a citywide, um, on a citywide basis. And taking into account some of the other natural disasters we might have, such as earthquakes and, and tsunamis.
Right, thank you, Chief.
You're welcome.
I think um, fir- first of all, that, that presentation was really good. So thank you to everybody involved with that. Uh, and getting to hearing some of those stories again, really brought back some, some, some awful memories from three years ago. Uh, but it also, as it's been mentioned, it reminded me of just how heroic so many people in the city were that night. I want to thank Cheryl for bringing up the fact that yes, we have world-class firefighters, world-class police officers. Uh, but there were so many involved in the effort that night from Public Works to Water to Parks and Rec. So many people who contributed from the city staff to that uh, superhuman effort that night and just reminded me how incredible uh, that the city team responded uh, that evening and in the days that followed. And so uh, thank you for this. Thank you for providing this information. I know it sent to the council and the public. I've been eager to see just to know that um, things are improving and that we might not be completely prepared, but we're a, a whole lot better prepared uh, moving forward. And I think that's really important for people to hear. Any uh, further uh, questions from council for staff? Okay, well, thank you everyone for bringing this uh, tonight uh, to the workshop. Uh, the next item, any city council communications or reports?